Okay, at six o'clock, I'll call this meeting to order. Yeah.
Sure.
Councilmember Gerard?
Here.
Councilmember Munson?
Here.
Councilmember Beistrum?
Here.
Councilmember Husnik?
Here.
Mayor Bain. Ask all of those that are able to join us for the budget of meetings.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, on a mission without end, in this world of liberty and justice for all.
You have an open forum scheduled for this evening, but I'm assuming that that is clear. Can somebody just confirm?
Clear.
Okay. Moving on, we are time-bound this evening with a seven o'clock council meeting, and so we will get as far as we can into tonight's budget discussion, and then please know that we have budget time reserved for the workshop, regularly scheduled workshop, next Monday at 6:30, so that will be our next opportunity to resume conversation related to the 2020 budget. So with that, turn it over to Patrick.
Yes, thank you. As you recall, the first budget meeting, we talked a great deal about refinancing bonds, the bond market that's favorable right now to municipalities. And so, following up on that conversation and following up on our internal discussions, we asked Ellers to come in and talk about preparing our bond sale for the future. The bond sale mostly to include refinancing the current building that we have here, the debt on this building, and the proposed water projects that are slated for the next three years. As some of you recall, you approved last December, water rate increases that would fund these projects. So we will let Ellers talk to you about it, but basically, we're going to try to bond for, I believe it's the next three years of projects now, so we can plan for them, take advantage of the lower rates, and to continue to upgrade and reinforce our water system. Again, the second portion of that is refunding the bonds on this building, changing it from a lease, EDA lease purchase arrangement to a straight GO bond purchase, refinance to save us quite a bit of money. And third, we will talk about $4 million funding for roads, and the possibility of also including that in this bond sale. So I will turn it over to Bruce Kimmel and Chris Mickelson of Ellers to go through their presentation and try to make this a little clearer than I have so far.
Thank you, Mayor, and councilmembers. I'm Bruce Kimmel, joined by my colleague Chris Mickelson, and we'd really like this to be an informal conversation. We do have a presentation for you, but this is just sort of a kickoff. This is one of several discussions we'll have with you, and really here to get your feedback, your questions, and your ideas on how we can fine-tune this. If you do want to proceed with all three purposes that we'll be discussing here, we'll be back in front of you in October with a much more fine-tuned set of recommendations and looking for some specific actions at that time. Okay, so hopefully everyone has the presentation in front of you, and hopefully I'm working out okay here on the AV system. What we'd like to do tonight is actually let your city staff give a brief overview of the city water and street projects that we're looking to provide funding for with this bond issue. You've seen these before, but we're really just looking to highlight some of those major projects. Talk a little bit about the specific opportunity that Patrick mentioned to refinance your 2013 EDA bonds that were sold for this facility, and really take advantage of the current interest rate environment to lock in some interest savings for the city going forward. Talk also about the three purposes in total that we're looking at for this bond issue: water revenue bonds to finance quite a few major water projects for the city, street reconstruction bonds to finance, as Patrick mentioned, about $4 million of future street project costs, and then the refunding using capital improvement plan bonding. We're looking at one bond issue for all three of these purposes. That will give you the most bang for the buck, if you will, high efficiency, you'll attract the most attention in the bond market, and because they are ultimately all general obligations of the city, there's no reason why you need to have three separate bond issues for each of the separate statutory authorities. It makes sense to combine them and again have the most efficiency. Then finally, we'll talk a little bit about the authorization and issuance process. Although we are looking at one bond issue, again, they do have three separate authorizations and authorities under state law, and we'll just give you a little bit of an overview of those details. There we go. All right, with that, why don't I take a minute to let Dave and Ryan give you a brief overview of these costs that we're looking to fund here with this bond issue?
Mayor and council, I believe Mayor and Sam, you were here last budget season when we went over this whole water project and kind of laid out a 10-year plan. So basically, this is just that same exact plan, but trying to pay upfront for more of the projects, kind of lock them in and get a good boundary instead of taking a bond out in '19 and then in '20 and then in '21. So the thought, you know, I believe is to get the most bang for your buck and, you know, kind of put in line for design and for finding locations and, you know, getting permits from the DNR and all this stuff, you know, the funding's there and ready to go, but you can start really planning away on all these projects.
Mayor, city council, I'm just to add on to that, so the reasons for the projects are, you know, we've been moving forward on plans and specs that you guys have authorized for rehab of plant one and three. So the addition of that plant's newest timeframe was in 1999. That's the newest really work you guys done on any of the existing plants, so going through rehab on that, you're dealing with original construction, kind of like we were with the lift station stuff. So making sure that treatment plant one and three is operational and ready for, you know, long-term use to allow for the new well, and that's also within the bond here, which was identified part of the water study in 2014 finalized in '15, showing, you know, where you guys are at with capacity and what needs to be added to the system to be able to allow future applications and developments or redevelopment. You know, just some things, you know, you talk about some of the stuff, this was a chart that I had here earlier, Headwaters Place, Headwaters Landing, Timber Ridge Apartments, Lighthouse Lofts, Headwaters Phases Seven through now 12 just came in, Chestnut Creek Phase One, Lila Expansion, North Lakes Academy, BP Gas Station redevelopment, Cornerstone Plaza, I mean, those are just a few things in the last few years, let alone, you know, if you go back to 1999 to add on where your system was at. So that's the reason behind that, and then also to incorporate Water Treatment Plant Two rehab, that's, construction was in 1996. So, you know, all the way, you know, '19 here, that's 23 years old already, never been touched since it was built. So it's really dealing with deferred maintenance on some of those items that need things to be done to prevent very costly repairs, and just, you know, the HVAC and the other stuff that's within there for monitoring everything, and then this capacity, if we want to entertain future development, we need to add capacity to the system. We've been very fortunate the last couple of years with the rain that we've had, you know, in retro, you know, obviously, we've been dealing with a lot more flooding things and, you know, drainage issues with properties, but a little lower pumping in the peak time of the summer with irrigation has been favorable to the city, but lost revenue too, so. But as the city moves forward with developments and redevelopment and comp planning, strategic planning, you guys need to have more capacity to meet the pumping capacity demands of what's out there today.
Mayor and councilmembers, I would just note that Ryan and Dave have already noted a few likely changes to these costs. So again, these are preliminary costs. We've tried to stick to mostly round numbers, knowing that there'll be more fine-tuning, but we wanted to give you a sense of the general projects and timing that we've tried to contemplate here. Should also point out that, as my colleague Chris will mention, as it relates to the water portion of the bonds, you'll note we stopped in 2021. We know that you actually have projects that are contemplated beyond that, and so we are anticipating and are planning for much smaller but subsequent bond issues in 2022 and 2025 for additional water projects. So this isn't the end of the road. We're just looking to scoop up a bunch of projects here in this initial go-around.
Additional water treatment plant, what's, how many years projected will that give us? Estimated?
Thinking long-term, built out of city, you'll need additional facilities. Depends on what the demand is in the market on new connections is what, and that will be tailored, and that's part of the reason with not everything bonded now, and talking about the second and third bond, because within that third bond would include a water tower, but that's going to be totally dependent upon where we're at that point in time and space on the demand that's reviewed annually, you know, all our reports are required to be submitted to the DNR, you know, pumping records and stuff like that. So as we see the trend on stuff like that, or we update, every 10 years, the city's required to do a water supply plan, so we're already, we're monitoring that stuff as we go. Same with your wellhead protection plans, one and two, phase one and two, that you're required to do every 10 years. So there's checks and balances as we go forward to continue to review that. It's just a very difficult question to ask, because if I would have answered that question in 2006, you would have had a totally different answer, you know, based on what we just came out of and, you know, where we're at today right now, so.
Thank you.
So to clarify, Ryan, the reason, because my question was, why isn't everything included in here, but there's a need to kind of reevaluate that demand over a period of time and then make some decisions about kind of next steps?
With the new treatment plants, you will gain some capacity in, like, storage, but really what it's fulfilling there is your pumping capacity in treatable water, that if you lost one of your plants right now, you lose over half your system, right? So that goes down. You can't supply in the peak times that we have outlined in the water, or the water study, which was then formulated into the water supply plan. We just haven't built any new infrastructure to account for all the growth that you guys have seen in the last 20 years. Like I said, the last expansion of a plant you guys did was in 1999. Imagine where the city was in 1999. So, and when you're getting out in the outskirts of everything, our pressure is getting lower too. So we're obviously looking in the south portion of the city where the new treatment plant would go, so.
So, Mayor and councilmembers, I thought it would be appropriate to follow that recap of the projects with some good news, because in total, you are looking at roughly a $35 million bond issue. Now, half of that is the refinancing, more than half of it is the refinancing, I'll keep saying that. But still, this is a significant investment for the city of Forest Lake, and so we want to just keep in the forefront of everyone's mind the really remarkable interest rate environment that we're still in. We keep on waiting for things to change, but this graph indicates just how low we are. So this is a 30-year look at what's something called the Bond Buyer Index. There's a, believe it or not, a daily newspaper for the municipal bond industry, which Chris and I read on a religious basis, but every week, they put together an index of 20-year rates for a basket of bonds that are maturing 20 years from now. So this week's index is looking at bonds that are maturing basically in September of 2039, okay, and taking a snapshot of how those bonds are trading and what kind of yields are being demanded for those bonds. And so this isn't, this bond index goes back decades and decades, but you can see that for the last 30 years, we reached a high rate mark in, I guess it was in October of 1990, and we've been trending downwards ever since. We reached an all-time low, not just a 30-year low, but an all-time low in the summer of 2016, and we thought, okay, that's it, it's got to be it, right? We have to start going back up. Well, you can see we did, and actually, then we dropped back down, and then we went back up, and now we've been in freefall, and we're almost close to the all-time low of 2.8%. We're at about 3% right now. So not good for us as investors, but very good for us as bond issuers, or you as the city of Forest Lake as bond issuers. And of course, you need to make sure you agree with the projects, you agree with the philosophy of issuing debt in order to achieve these projects, but if you are going to be issuing bonds for these water and street projects, you're pretty much in the very best rate environment that you could ask for. And with the turmoil in the world economy, with the imbalance of supply and demand, there's far too much demand chasing too little supply for bonds. You're going to keep seeing rates being suppressed more than you would otherwise expect. So it's a great environment to be looking at both this refinancing as well as the new money for water and streets.
What is the rate on the retiring, the current bond for the building?
Yep, and that was a phenomenal rate, Mayor. I've got it right here. Excuse me. The average coupon on that bond issue was just over 3%. Yep. And that went very, very well, and just to bury the lead a little bit, we're projecting an interest rate of about 2.3% to refinance what's left on that bond issue, on that portion of the overall bond issue.
Thank you.
So we will recap the refunding again as part of the overall bond issue, but we did want to, again, lead with this positive tailwind that you'll be generating for yourself with this refinancing. So as some of you may recall, in 2013, the council and the EDA of the city of Forest Lake worked together to issue lease revenue bonds and to enter into a lease arrangement for this government-centered project. We purposely structured those bonds, working with Edward Jones, who purchased the bonds with a very short call feature or redemption option of five years. And so those bonds, the EDA bonds, were eligible as of February of last year to be either redeemed or refinanced or some combination of those. And that was in part because the city anticipated sale proceeds from selling the outlots, right, for commercial development, and so wanted to be able to apply those proceeds, among other potential resources, to refinancing. Well, unfortunately, the opportunity that we had in early 2018 evaporated when rates went up, it served just, it didn't make sense to pull the trigger on a refunding at that time, but now with the current rate environment, we're back in a very positive situation. In addition, you have roughly $1.8 million in unused bond proceeds and land sale proceeds that are sitting in an account that really can only be used, well, we need to figure out exactly what we can use those funds for along with bond counsel, but essentially, you have those monies available for debt service and for this refinancing. So we'll see if there's other things you can do with them as well, just so you can have a fully informed decision, but you have an opportunity to utilize those surplus funds. So we assumed that using $1 million of those surplus funds, we'll see if that ends up being the right number, but applying $1 million of cash to this refinancing and then looking at the current interest rates as well, we're estimating net savings of about $150,000 per year in fiscal '20 through '33. So it's quite a bit of savings, and as we'll talk about in a minute, you could use that as essentially paying down a portion of the new levy requirement that would be related to the street project financing as well. But we'll continue to refine that, working with Sandy and working with bond counsel to make sure that we're giving you a fully informed set of recommendations as to how much of that surplus cash to use. So then, just to note, you'll actually issue these bonds, these CIP bonds, as we call them, to acquire the facilities from the EDA. It will be an acquisition from the EDA to the city. You'll terminate the lease agreement between the city and the EDA, and essentially, with those acquisition proceeds, the EDA will redeem its bonds in full. So that's kind of the mechanics there with the refinancing. Any questions about that before we talk a little bit more about the bond issue, the other parts of the bond issue? Okay, I'm going to turn it over to Chris to talk about the water and the street portions in a little more detail.
So as Patrick and Bruce have mentioned, this proposed bond issue contemplates three purposes. The first purpose of that is this 12.98 million GO water revenue bond portion, and this would fund 12.85 million of city water projects, as the chart that Bruce showed, beginning in 2019 and concluding in 2021. The estimated debt service for this portion has a slight ramp to it, so it starts a little bit lower and picks up a little bit in the following two years. So the first year of debt service in fiscal year of 2020 would be estimated at $700,000. In 2021, approximately $900,000, and then 1.1 million from fiscal years 2022 through the end of this issue, which would be 2034, making it 15 years in total. So long as bonds are issued using, go ahead.
Are those total debt service, both in that would be shared by the water fund as well as the general fund?
So this specifically relates just to what the water fund would pay? That's correct. So this is just for the water portion of the bond issue.
Thank you.
So long as water utility revenues are used to pay the entirety of debt service, then you can see that bullet point there, no public hearing requirement for this portion, and then also this does not apply to the 3% net debt limit for the city. As Bruce mentioned a minute ago, this would anticipate a smaller bond issue, right now estimated at about 1.7 million in 2022, and then a third bond issue in 2025 estimated right now at 2 million. And final bullet point here, scenario three, which the council adopted in the fall of this past year, the water rate increases included in that appear to support the future water fund operations and debt service without transfers in. The analysis that we reviewed that AEM provided the city and then we updated to include this scenario, as well as these 2022 and 2025 scenarios, show anywhere from 400 to 600,000 in fund balance above the target levels, which is right on track with what AEM had provided the city last fall.
Just, we've had a, we have some new members that weren't here for that water rate study. Scenario three is that won't be budgeted to, Chris, just some clarification?
Yes, we, the council in last December voted to pass scenario number three, which called for a series of rate increases, and then passed those rates and baked them in, I believe, so in at least the next five years?
That's correct.
Or so, yeah, five years. So those are already in place, those will automatically go into place each year. I believe the first year was 18%, then 15%, and I think it went down to 7%, if I'm not mistaken, somewhere right in there, so.
That's correct. So the second purpose for this proposed issue contemplates 4 million, just over 4 million in GO street reconstruction bonds. This would fund exactly 4 million of street rehabilitation projects in 2020 through 2022. Estimated debt service for this portion would be approximately 320,000 from fiscal years 2020 through 2034, to be repaid by property tax levy. A public hearing is required on this portion per the Street Reconstruction Plan statutes, and this has a feature similar to capital improvement plan bonding, where there's a reverse referendum petition period. So that allows 30 days for a petition to be filed, 30 days following that public hearing. And so long as no petition is filed by residents, and that's 5% of the votes cast in the last general election, so long as that petition has not been received in that 30-day window, then the bond issue can proceed without any sort of referendum.
Say that one more time, 5% of votes cast in the last election?
That's correct.
If that petition is successful within 30 days, then it's required to go on a ballot?
That's correct.
Or, or Mayor, you can revise the bond issue to take that portion out and just proceed with the water?
Just the water, okay.
And the refunding, depending on what happens. So we're, you, we can pull pieces as necessary.
Okay, thank you. Council, any further questions on that?
No, thanks.
As we go around here.
So this funding would be separate from the current road financing that is already in the city's budget for the coming years. So this would be 4 million above and beyond what is currently budgeted for. And the city can direct the refunding savings to reduce the net levy impact. So as I said, it would be 320,000 proposed here for the annual, estimated annual debt service. That would be bought down by the refunding savings of approximately 150,000 annually, so that the net levy impact would only be here approximately 170,000 annually. And then finally, the third portion of this is, as Bruce has discussed, the refunding component. This is 18.17 million GO capital improvement plan bonds to fund 19 million redemption of the EDA lease revenue bonds. This includes 1 million of surplus funds, as Bruce discussed, and that is certainly subject to revision. The estimated net savings for this would be $150,000 per year in fiscal years 2020 through 2033. A public hearing is required, just like the street reconstruction plan portion, and there is also this 30-day reverse referendum petition period for CIP bond issues. As this final bullet point says, this refunding is an opportunity, not a crisis. The interest rate environment is very favorable at this point, and surplus funds will dictate really in the desire to jumpstart these street investments, you know, now really feels like the right time to pull the trigger.
On the, this bond for the EDA, when is that, when would we currently, if we didn't do anything, be finished paying off the EDA?
Pass that back to Bruce.
It would be, Councilmember Gerard, it would be 2033.
Okay, so the date doesn't change?
And so it's the same timeframe, yes. We're not looking to either accelerate it or extend it, just using the exact same timeframe, but locking in the better interest rates.
Thank you.
Ma'am, may I just go back a little bit to the street projects? The reason we're asking $4 million, one of the main reasons is to try to catch up with our street projects, but the other reason is that it looks as if most of our local share of the state road funds will be going towards matching funds for the Goodview and 97th project and possibly the county roads, and if, Ryan, you want to expound in that, please.
I'll just kind of reiterate where we're at with our funding mechanisms for street projects currently. So the city has state aid funds and franchise fees that we've been funding with the local funds. Our state aid funds either can go towards our roads that are designated state aid routes or stated eligibility projects, cooperative agreement projects, you know, with the county and state that we've had. So of recent, cooperative agreement project, the double roundabout, we had a local share in there with the legs and pedestrian facilities. So some funds were there, and then we were able to do majority of streets that we wanted to do in this year's project, but we had to stop short of Centennial to account for the project coming up with Goodview. So you see where we stopped by the post office. We wanted to go to the south, but we have to, you know, reserve our state aid funds for the cost local share for the Goodview project, which, to be conservative, I'm reserving the 2021 and 22 state aid construction allotment. We still get our maintenance, which goes towards your seal code and crack filling and double chip seal projects, but because I don't have any other source of revenue, I have to, you know, reserve that for three years. So basically, we're not going to look at a project for three years until we know what the bid is. But we also have Washington County coming back. That's going to do the County Road 33 project, which is Everton Avenue from Broadway down to the project they left off. That'll be 23 construction. We will have a local share in that project with local legs and pedestrian facilities and some utility relocation. And then in '25, construction is planned for County Road 32, which goes from 61 to the bridge project. So you can see how that keeps going, and MinDOT's starting to scope and feel out some stuff on 97 between '35 and the current roundabout, so potentially, there's local share there too. And then Highway 8, they're looking at 23 project, a lot of momentum there. More will be talked about with that, but you have all these projects, and really, right now, our only mechanism to pay for our local shares are state aid construction funds. So that's really been taken away for quite some time with all the products that are in the pipeline. Thus, that's 25 miles, that's, you know, we lost funding on our local roadways too. So, and as you look at the roads, you know, we've made some progress on the lower echelon. We don't have a road rated one, two right now. Maybe you can argue, what is a two or not, but what we're looking at is our fives and sixes have doubled since 2012, and those are only going to fall if we don't do something. And to jumpstart some of the roads that we need to do some more work than, you know, if they were, we were jumping on the sixes right now, you know, the plan would be trying to get to, you know, a point on some of these roadways where we can do more just straight milling overlay and not some full payment replacement in areas, thus our linear foot cost is much cheaper. But if we can keep these roads better surfaced, you know, Public Works does less patching, snow plowing's better, because they can get the blade on the road. road easier, roads are safer. And then if we can catch up and then all of a sudden we're into a potential situation where now you're actually looking at to be able to do some enhancements. So this four million would be strictly maintenance. We're not looking at expanding roads. I don't think the bond would be eligible to allow expansion or stuff like that. I know we have some bonding bill requests in for additional funding monies and stuff like that, uh, but that, those would be separate from what we're talking. We're strictly looking at roads, uh, you know, dressing with this money that are currently rated four or lower right now.
Ryan, follow-up question. You said County Road, what is the County Road that's 61 to the bridge, was the 2025 project? Is that 11th Avenue?
Yep. Or County State Aid Highway 32.
Say that again.
220th, somewheres, some addresses too.
County Road 32 is County Road, or, um, 11th Avenue.
11th Avenue, okay.
And then what is the Highway 8 portion that's planned that would be?
So Shisago County's taking the lead on that project, which originally started out with it being aligned with something with the 23 timeframe because MnDOT had some money allocated for resurfacing that roadway, but the county wants to do something bigger. Uh, obviously, we got some industrial park area on one side of that that doesn't have sewer water, you know, stuff that we'll want to look at now. Uh, but they're looking at potentially seeing what a four-lane corridor would fit through there between, you know, basically our 61 interchange where it starts narrowing down all the way up through Carmel Avenue, the entrance of Shisago City.
Of the four million planned for maintenance, do you have a projection for these three, Everton, County Road 11, Highway 8? Do you have a projection on what you think of how much that will take of the four million?
That's, I'm, I'm using state aid funds for that. That's why the, the, the bond proceeds would strictly go towards local roadways of roads that are rated four or lower.
Do you have an in, and if we want to table this for later, we can, um, at some point, it'd be nice to see a prioritization of those four million.
Whatever's orange.
Which is most of the roads that are routinely traveled by a lot of people.
It'd be great to see that, that, you know.
If, if you check your emails today, you shall have, you have it already.
So each year, we'll go through and do a road rating and update our map. So this was last updated in October 2018, so.
Thank you.
And that's what the percents were of each category, as you guys may have seen in your emails, or the packet tonight too, as well.
So if we were to go this route, would that eliminate the $250,000 currently proposed?
Uh, we would need, I would, I would recommend adjusting that 250,000 to a different number. Uh, I was doing some of that today. Taking this into consideration, the savings, and still not wanting to, and wanting to start funding roads on a permanent basis, I would say a new debt service for that would be between 50 and 100,000 to start. So we would knock the 250 down to either 50 or 100,000, depending on how the, the levy goes, uh, in this. And then we would come up with a plan to add to that every year until we got to the, the target goal, based on whatever the 10-year plan's going to say.
So if we landed in the 50,000 range, we could conceivably be seeing about a $30,000 net savings based on the 250,000. Does that make sense?
Makes sense, yes. It would, if you did just that in, in very preliminary figures, your levy increase would go down from 755 to 645.
Okay.
Basically at a $50,000 level.
Okay.
If I remove, move ahead.
Great. Thank you, Mayor and Councilmembers. So we just have a couple of final slides, and, and thank you again for this opportunity. I think it's been helpful for us to hear this as well. Uh, we just wanted to walk you through at a high level the process going forward. So we're here tonight for this preliminary review of the, of the financing plan. Uh, we will take a few steps, including publication of notices in the paper for a public hearing, or two public hearings technically, to occur on October 14th. Uh, at that time, we'll also present our final recommendations for the overall bond issue with a little more detail and find two numbers, such as relating to how much of the, the surplus, uh, we, uh, the city will be applying to the refunding. And then we'll have in front of you what's called a parameters resolution that will essentially adopt both the street reconstruction plan and the capital improvement plan, as well as authorize us to work with city staff to move the full issuance process forward from that point. Contingent, of course, on, on clearing the 30-day reverse referendum windows. Uh, so assuming that happens, that would be on October, or season November 13th. Um, and, you know, I guess I would point out, and will continue to make this point, that the two items that are, are subject to public hearings are first, improving city streets, right, and saving money, a lot of money, uh, on an existing obligation. So one would hope that both of those would be generally supported, but we'll continue to share information as appropriate on, on those. But then moving forward, assuming that goes smoothly, uh, at any point, basically with this parameters resolution approach, we could take bids on the city's behalf. We're looking at doing that as soon as November 14th, maybe as late as November 21st. Those are both Thursdays. I mention that because those are days that not a lot of municipal bonds get sold, uh, and it's well before the Thanksgiving holiday, which is on the 28th this year. And so we think that the market will be really favorable, uh, somewhere in that timeframe for the city's bond issue. And then with the bid results, we would convene a pricing committee that would typically be the mayor, the city administrator, the city finance director, to review the winning bid, make sure it's within the parameters that were laid out in the resolution that the city council approved. And assuming that's all great, we would then award the bonds to the winning bidder on the day of sale, most likely also coming back to the next council meeting, which would be on the 25th, just to report on the results. Then finally, uh, estimated closing would be sometime in mid-December, maybe a little bit earlier than the 17th, which we have here. And just to clarify, uh, at that point, you had received the full proceeds of the water and the street portions of the bond issue, both for any initial disbursements as well as for investment. Already been talking with your finance director about opportunities to work with your investment advisor and lock in really advantageous, uh, investment opportunities for those bond proceeds while, while they're sitting there. A lot of them will be spent quickly, but some of the water proceeds in particular, we want to make sure that the city is maximizing its earnings on those water proceeds, uh, as well as some of the street proceeds, excuse me. Then finally, I'm really excited about this next step. Sometime late this year, early next year, we'll be working with, in earnest with the city staff to develop a comprehensive financial planning model, looking at all of your major operating capital funds on a, on a forward-looking basis. So, uh, really covering the waterfront with all your, uh, general capital and utility funds for a 10-year projection. And this will give you the ability to test different assumptions relating to everything from population growth to, uh, expense, revenue and expense drivers in your budget and capital investments. And I want to note that, you know, we've talked about two subsequent bond issues for the water projects, but ideally, if, if city SAC revenue continues to come in strong, if things proceed according to plan, it'd be wonderful to be able to avoid one of those bond issues, and either the, the first one or the second one. But this model will help you project what would it take to be able to cash fund the water tower, for instance? What would it take, to Patrick's earlier point, to build up enough, uh, budget capacity to be able to cash fund roads at the levels you want and need to without further bond issues? So that's really the power of this plan, is giving you this, the ability to test different sets of assumptions, more ca, more cash, less debt, more debt, less cash, and, and see what might be a sweet spot for the city going forward. Ultimately, the bottom line impacts that we look for are what are the property tax impacts of everything, all, all-inclusive, the utility rate impacts and fund balances, so that you have confidence making those decisions, that we're not going off the rail in, in any of those forward projections. So more to come on this, but, uh, we thank you for your attention and would welcome any further questions.
Thank you. Any further questions? I have, I had a question about, um, you know, historical perspective, I'm just kind of hearing the pros and cons. So when this building was funded, that was done through an EDA, through a certain type of bond, um, are there pros of that bond that we are now losing by moving to a different structure, a general obligation bond, or just looking for kind of pros and cons of moving into that?
Sure. Mayor, uh, I would say that you did extremely well with the EDA financing in 2013 in getting that three percent interest rate. That interest rate was virtually right on top of general obligation interest rates at that time, so you didn't pay a significant penalty, if you will, for going with that lease purchase route. But in general, geo-bonds, general obligation bonds are going to get better interest rates. And, and, um, so our, our philosophy is if, if you're doing these other bond issues, if it makes sense to bundle them together, um, it, it certainly, and since this building's already built, you don't have any further costs, you're just paying the debt service, it really makes sense to lock in the best possible interest rates going forward.
On the staff side of that, it'll make the accounting process a lot easier. You'll actually eliminate two or three funds by doing it this way. We won't have an EDA lease fund, an EDA debt service fund. It'll be truly, really transparent that here's your debt and here's what it, it's about, instead of shuffling money between different funds to pay leases and things like that.
What's going to be my next question? Are there any differences in, now that everything is built out, any differences in operations or restrictions that we are?
That I know, no.
Very good. Any further questions on this topic? Thank you so much for being here.
Thank you.
What are next steps? Do we have a set of next steps on these plans?
So we have 20 minutes remaining.
Patrick, could I just say one, ask, say one last thing? I apologize, Mayor and Councilmembers, but, um, I guess we do want to just note that we are asking you to then call for a public hearing or to take whatever steps you typically do for October 14th. So that wouldn't be here at this work session, but if, if you, if it's appropriate to make a motion at the council member.
My next point was, was can we get some, uh, direction here if this is an okay plan? If this is something you want us to go forward with, if there are major changes or little changes, but we need to start the process, you know, it's a pretty tight timeframe, but does this make sense and do you want us to move forward?
Good question.
No one likes to, no one hates borrowing money more than I do, but there are certainly times when you have to, and there's just all there is to it. And as far as I'm concerned, I don't know if I can get it any cheaper than it is right now, and we do need to get some things done. There's no question about that. So, I mean, I, um, I'll be looking at this myself, but, uh, it seems like a good time to move forward. This is my opinion.
I think just, just the savings in the refinancing of this building, up to a million dollars or over the life of the bond is, is something that we really, yeah, it is. It really is.
I, I think it's, I think it's vital. Um, I mean, this makes, makes a lot of sense to me. But I think it's vital, um, that we are in, that we are able to really communicate what we're doing clearly to our community. Um, and I'm not sure if ailers can help us with that, kind of craft some talking points around, you know, what this means to our residents, uh, why we're considering this decision simplified in a way, because they tend to see sa, spending, not savings. Um, I'm seeing the savings, um, along with the spending, this, and that's why it makes sense to me. But I'm also a proponent of bringing our community along with us anytime we're going to make a big decision like this. So that would be my only, um, comment, would be, um, I think we need some support potentially in framing some talking points around what this means, um, you know, clearly to our community.
To add on to the savings portion, I mean, anytime you're doing maintenance on a timely basis, that's a money savings, no matter how you look at it. And, and Ryan brought that up, but some costly repairs, and that's, some, some things happen with these water treatment plants in particular. Same thing with roads. It's more expensive to have a lousy road than it is to have a decent road, so, in my opinion.
I would, I would agree with Councilman Husnick. I'm a big fan of cash and carry, but on the other hand, we're pretty far behind the eight ball here. Uh, my only concern is, this is a fair amount of money. What does it do to what may be available later if we would need more? Are we at the max of what our bonding would be, or are we at the minimum? Or is that really a stupid question to ask? I'm okay with that.
It's a great question. I don't know if you'll like the answer, but the answer is pretty much like you have a, a black card. You can borrow as much money as you want. And, and I don't mean that in a, in a joking way. That's why having this financial plan will be so important, so that you really are comfortable with the affordability and the, and the fee, and the long-term sustainability of whatever financing decisions you make, because the market will give you virtually as much money as you want. Um, and it's, of course, the buck stops with you in terms of what can the city actually afford. I did meant to, mean to mention, Mayor and Councilmembers, you have a double A-plus credit rating from Standard and Poor's, which is an excellent, excellent rating. Uh, we really don't see any stress whatsoever on that rating. If, if anything, it's, it's a question of when will you ultimately achieve triple A? We don't anticipate that here with this bond issue, but we'll keep working with city staff to position the city as well as possible. The refunding will be neutral, or a little bit of a positive with your credit rating because you're reducing your, your interest expense. The water bond portion, which is the next largest portion, is really a non-factor in the credit agencies' eyes because it's supported by water revenues. And so it's an enterprise financing and not a tru, truly a general financing of the city. And so then really the only part that might have any impact is the road bonding, which is by far the smallest part. And even there, um, the thing that S and P likes more than anything else is that you have a plan and that you're working a plan. And everything I've heard from Patrick and Sandy and Ryan and Dave is that you really want to redouble your efforts to have a plan and work a plan. And, and that is far and away the biggest, uh, thing they're looking for. So, um, the, the market, again, will, will let you borrow as much as you want, but we're, we're here to make sure that you feel good about those decisions going forward, so.
Thank you.
I appreciate your hard work. Thank you.
Councilmember Husnick?
Um, I would just say that I would support this moving forward. When I look at Ryan's map today and see all the orange on there, the amount of catch-up that we have to do, the only thing that I would, um, would just say is in line with what Kathy, Councilmember Beistrum, said in terms of just communicating, because that will be really big, I think, at this time.
Yeah. I'll just echo comments that were already made. I agree with the comments that have been made, and I have notes all over my sheets here of points that need to be made in a communication plan, but also I think this probably is requiring some sort of council roadshow where we kind of do, you know, take, you know, different groups of the community and get in front and kind of explain why between now and October. Um, I think the original question was around, you know, net steps. I'm hearing consensus, and I would say we can add it to our agenda here at seven o'clock for our council meeting to just officially take action to put it on for our public hearing.
Yeah, we don't need a resolution. We just need a, the direction and a vote would be fine, yes.
Perfect, perfect. Um, and, you know, as it relates to having a financial plan, I guess I'd point out, you know, there's three parts of this. We've talked a lot ever since I've been on council about, um, street funding and how are we going to crack that nut? And so there's a component that does that and starts to tackle that challenge. The water plan, bonding for the water plan's been part of the plan all along, and that was part of the great study that previous council had considered. And then the other piece is just the refinancing, which is just a savings opportunity and seems like the milk brain. So I think there's some great, you know, we can put some great communication, it's great information out there to support what it is that we're doing. Thanks to staff and the other staff for putting all of this together.
I guess I would also like to see that tax impact side, and it, um, it looks like we might be balancing some of that out with the reduction in the proposal for 2020.
Yes.
Yes.
Correct. I mean, we, we need to talk a little further about what you want to do, if anything, with the budget, before we start to change that. But by, and by the, I think it's the last meeting in September when we will set the preliminary levy, uh, we should make some adjustments based on what we've seen here tonight. The other side of that is it's also only a preliminary levy. So even if we leave it at where it's at now, by the time we get to December, we should have that all scrubbed out and, and make any recommendations if we can't buy it the end of the month, so.
And we can reduce it, we just can't increase it.
We can increase it, we can, we cannot reduce it. So, you know, the conservative part of me says, leave it where it's at and we'll figure it out before we get to December, so.
Very good. Counselors, or, um,
Council, or Patrick, as part of tonight's agenda, we had a number of other items. In our remaining time, we want to tackle a couple of these items, knowing you probably won't get through all of them.
Yeah, in your packets today, we're just, there was a couple of questions. There's two things we need, one real thing, we need to set the Truth in Taxation public hearing. That's the most important out of these, we can go to the others later. So if we do nothing else, we would like to set that. But we, you've asked seven or eight different questions last time we met on budget, and the responses are in your packet, and if you want follow-up, or you just want to ignore them, or you want to accept some, or whatever you want to do, now's the time to start talking about that, knowing that we also have another workshop slated next Monday, I believe it is, as well.
Can you outline the first item to the Taxation Public Hearing? December 9th at 6:00 is the time and date suggested by staff. That is right before a regular council meeting. Councilmembers, 6:00, if you would follow you.
Yeah, here's what it is.
What day is that?
December 9th. Do you want us to take official action at the council meeting on that?
That would be good, if, I don't know if you need to have to, but you might as well. And we're trying to keep these budget hearings, or all these public hearings, on a council date, just a little earlier. I think it's easier for you to remember that we have those, and not have extra meetings or anything like that, and we can just get those in place.
Patrick, we can add both of those items to the agenda for 7:00. In our remaining time, I will open up for any questions on the rest of the packet, and know that we also have a full workshop next Monday, as well, on some additional conversation.
Well, the first couple, we've already kind of covered here with this workshop. I mean, as far as, we've, you know, we've talked about the, what it's going to cost to taxpayers, and item two, changes in the general fund. So the next item would be the police department employee position, going to captain, is that the idea?
Yes, there was two position requests that we did not fund. One was to create a captain's position, additional captain's position in the budget, and the chief has sent a memo out recapping that information, with the theory is that we would promote from within, from a sergeant to a captain, patrolman goes then to captain, I mean, patrolman then goes to sergeant, and then we would create a new patrol position. So that's how we would believe that would work, and chief, if you want to say anything else.
Yeah, I tried to sum it up in the memo for you. As you know, the city council, a couple of years ago, asked for a third party to complete a case study on the operations of the police department, and there are a lot of recommendations, there are like 61, and we actually implemented well over half of those. Most of them were already in the works, or they were, there was no cost to them. The biggest one was the record management system that Washington County was working on, and actually rolled out last year. And one of the recommendations that they had was that, was to implement a new position of a detective sergeant. And that individual would supervise the detectives' division, and also assist the current captain with some of the ancillary duties that he currently has. Over the last few years, we've seen a real, significant increase in records management, new mandates and guidelines, and rules for the property room and evidence room, and there's quite a bit of, as we all have seen over the last few years, some civil liability issues when it comes to law enforcement agencies. Our current captain, to be honest with you, is just inundated with records, with policies, updating policies and procedures, he oversees the trainings, and as I mentioned in my memo, there's three things that'll get law enforcement agencies in trouble, and that is not having updated policies or procedures, and not ensuring that your personnel are following those, not training your personnel properly, and then a lack of supervision. Now, I'm not saying that these things aren't, or that these are occurring. We definitely have updated our policies and procedures over the last few years, we update them every year. We also ensure that our officers have adequate training, but one of the areas that, I'm going to be honest with you, does concern me going forward, is that civil liability issue. And when you have a supervisor that's pulled in so many directions, all it takes is one thing that falls through, and the next thing you know, there is a major liability that could be out there. In looking at the case study that was completed, I fully agree that we do need a position to oversee the detective division. Currently, our captain directly supervises four sergeants, four detectives, and then also assists with three, with supervising the three police administrative assistants. And that detective sergeant position would assist in that area. In looking at it, though, and researching it, I really feel that a second captain would be more appropriate. If you have a detective sergeant position, you are looking at, with their labor contract, you're looking at, you know, overtime, there's holiday pay, and some other things. Whereas when I have a captain, it's an appointment by me, and that individual is an exempt employee, and they are expected to put in at least 40 hours a week. And there are certain times where my captain will be putting in 50 or 60 hours a week, and there is no overtime accrual. I really feel that this position is needed. And I also feel that having a captain's position would assist our department in going forward, it would help with the span of control, with supervision, and it would assist in the slow growth that we'll probably be seeing over the next five years and 10 years, and it'll put us in a real positive and in good position. Just tried to kind of summarize that memo right there. If there's any other questions that you have for me, I did work with our finance director, and we, as you can see, we came up with the cost of implementing this, which actually is not only the captain's position, but it would be filling in the sergeant's position, because I'm assuming that captain's position may come from the sergeant ranks, it doesn't have to. But I do feel we have three or four personnel who could do an excellent job as captain. And it does show that it would cost approximately $143,000 to implement this change. But I also want to make it very clear that this, if this was approved, that $143,000 would not occur in 2020, just because of the length of time of hiring process, appointments, those types of things. I don't think they would occur fully until about June or July. And so my projections, along with the finance director, is that it would possibly be half that cost for 2020, and then the full cost would occur in 2021. I think I summed it up there for you. I do apologize, after I sent out the memo and the PowerPoint, I realized that there were a couple of grammatical errors and spelling, but so be it. But if you have any further questions for me, definitely ask them now, or in the next few weeks as well, or if you want to email, or meet with me in person, that's fine.
Thank you, chief. Perhaps, given the time, we should regroup on all of these budget topics next week. Next week is our last budget workshop that is scheduled, and so we should give stacks and direction on what we'd like to see. The budget analysis that's been prepared, you did go through, part of our packet was a detailed breakout of the general fund impact. Could that be updated to reflect everything that is in the packet, including, because we've got a couple of new things that were considered, the new positions? I think it'd be helpful to see those all lined out, of what the impact could be, so that council can take a look at the full menu of options, to be able to do some prioritization.
But we would add those to the general fund total, if that's what you're speaking about, correct?
Correct.
And then how to pay for those positions, and that would be, we have no other method besides increasing the levy to match those.
And I personally, I'm not suggesting that, I don't believe we will end up doing everything that is part of that, but I think we would like to see a full funded menu of options.
Yeah, I just want to see what it takes, yeah. That's no problem whatsoever.
But I just want to have everything that's on the table, so that we're able to, as part of our discussion on Monday, go through prioritization, and...
We will give you the recreation, communications coordinator will give you the police captain, and try to summarize or outline what the $4 million bond does to the levy, and how we can adjust those things.
That'd be great.
Yes. Also, as part of that, could we also see the, because I heard some of the discussion on the bond issuance was the use of some cash, also use of some proceeds that we currently have sitting in surplus. It'd be nice to see projected surplus balances, compared to our benchmark, being the 50% funded level.
Yeah, those are not in the general fund, so they, they'll have minimal impact, as far as any of the operating funds go, so.
That's, so those are missing, are you doing fund?
Yes.
Okay. There isn't a plan to use any general fund as part of the...
No, and if we go through this refunding, and we use, let's just say, the example was $1 million, and we have fund balance left, I would recommend that being transferred out somewhere else, either to capital equipment, capital improvement, so we can close out those funds that we have.
Anything else we'd like staff to prepare prior to Monday, that is top of mind right now? With that, I will look for a motion to adjourn. Motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion, a second, I'll listen to whoever's saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and we're adjourned.